I have to have my.
Okay. Okay, I call to order the Board of Assessors meeting at nine oh three.
Uh, this meeting is being uh audio and video recorded for playback later on Channel Nine in YouTube. And posted on the town's website.
Thank you Nancy. I forgot to say that.
Okay, so um old business. Stonegate Land. Is our first topic.
What's new?
Yeah, is there anything new on that?
Okay, so. If you look at the latest deed. When it's going from Abel Realty back to Stonegate. Um, so listing of all the lots.
That's the most recent transaction, right? Back to Stonegate.
Yes. Um, and then it it discussed parcel one, two, three, and four. Okay, so and a total acreage of thirty one point four five acres. So if you go to the plans. If you add parcel one, two, three, and four. That is thirty one point.
Whatever.
Whatever acres.
Yeah.
So that's not including all the broken out lots.
Right.
So it's just the remaining of seven, remaining of eight. And the ones that they're questioning. And the two common areas, that's one, two, three, and four on their plan.
Okay.
So. It looks like their plan. Thirty one acres doesn't include all these lots, only includes this piece. So it looks like the deed. Either the acreage is wrong on the deed. Cause it's not including the eight or nine acres of the split out lots. So.
Well, for those.
No, so so I mean, it says. All these lots plus one, two, three, and four, which is a total of thirty one point four five.
Is that everything that was sold to Abel?
Yes.
So then all of it didn't transfer back, is what you're saying?
No, it did, but. If you look at. And.
Yeah.
It's saying all these lots, these twenty lots or whatever, and the four pieces equal thirty one point four five. Well, only the four pieces.
Came back.
Equal thirty one point four five.
Only the four pieces.
Only the four pieces.
The whole thing, everything. What's the total acreage?
Well. It used to be thirty seven for this whole, for this whole. Started off on the plans at sixty six acres, both seven and eight.
Okay.
Right.
So if you sort of.
Well, we're not talking about these, right? And all this. We're only talking about what's in red.
No, my question was, in the beginning, the whole thing was sixty some acres way backwards.
Yes.
And then they built out some of it.
Yes.
And what's left is thirty one point seven.
But it's thirty one and change, yeah. It looks like thirty one five two.
But it's not because they didn't include all those.
Cut out pieces, even though the deed shows. It's those four pieces, the big pieces or the common pieces. Plus these, so thirty one point four five is just the four pieces, not all this listed. Lots. So.
Is the acreage correct? This acreage is correct. From what was sold to Abel and then had to be sold back to Stonegate, correct?
No, because it's those little pieces aren't included in that.
These, when you say these little, these little pieces, you call and talk about these.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what they added up for their.
But if they're included in.
It's just one, two, three, and four. It's thirty one point four five.
But it also says lots, all thirty eight A.
Right. But the total acreage isn't.
Those are all in there, right?
But it isn't, but the acreage.
Yeah.
So their plan thirty one point four five doesn't include this. Acreage of those.
Okay, so if you add the sixteen oh nine.
Originally it was thirty six, now it's down to twelve.
So sixteen oh nine, twelve point fourteen, and these little ones, that's the thirty one. So question is.
They just didn't specifically. I I mean, if all this. That A, B, and C equals thirty one fifty two. They just didn't specifically break out each one of these fifty one, fifty, forty nine, forty eight, forty seven.
They did on the D, but they didn't include the acreage in this thirty one point four five.
In the sale back to Stonegate. But they had to have, because if they bought thirty one fifty two and then they sold back thirty one fifty two.
Right, but it's not.
How much did Abel buy initially that we had to reverse?
How many, how how many lots?
No, the first deed that Stonegate sold to Abel. But what's the acreage on that one?
It's always this thirty one point four five.
Thirty one four five, okay. So this, this, and this. Should equal thirty one forty five. We've got thirty one fifty two, but whatever.
Yeah.
Say it's close enough.
Yeah.
Um, well, then if they turn around and sold that back.
They keep selling back the same acreage back and forth.
Right.
But.
Do they reference lots seven, eight?
Description and lots.
They, that's um parcel one and two is lot seven and lot eight.
All right, so that's this one, and that's this one.
Right.
So they are separate from these.
Yes, so let's call it A, B, and C.
Yeah.
Right, or one, two, and three, right? So these are one and two undeveloped. This is developed already. The one, two, and three. But I'm confused.
No, this isn't developed yet. This, this road isn't even in. Over here.
This is what they're gonna do.
Yeah, that's the plan.
And that's what they're being taxed on because they. Split them out.
Yep.
And deeds going back and forth, back and forth. And they actually have a fifty percent deduction because of the road, so not getting full tax, they get half off.
Right, okay.
For the road not being there. If you're looking at the G I S.
This lot says ten acres.
If you're looking at the G I S, we're updating our maps.
Okay.
So what Bill's looking at might not be the most up to date, but this printout is.
So it's top one. So that is.
Oh, that's right, that's actually.
So. If all these little pieces weren't in here, we would be talking about these pieces, all right? Two chunks, seven and eight, okay? And that's undeveloped land. So the taxes on that would be lower. The minute they draw in all the pieces.
Mm hmm.
These go up, because these are now house lots.
Yes.
So the taxes increase.
The road's not.
Yeah, but. The minute they drew in all those lots. The amount of taxes for what were a total seven and eight.
Yeah.
Seven and eight in effect have kind of shrunk, and the taxes on this, these portions have all gone up. So seven, what's left of seven and eight are still at a lower rate, because evidently it's not buildable from the markings I'm seeing. Okay, so.
So in twenty, seven was thirty six acres. In F Y twenty one, it went to twelve acres, and those other lots were split out.
Right, okay.
So. On their deeds, they're still only saying thirty one point four five.
Okay.
Which doesn't include the split out lots. They're taking that twelve acres here, the sixteen here, and the one point nine and the one point three here to get that thirty one.
I see what you're saying. Okay, so they've taken this, this, this.
That was what I said.
And yeah, and not this at all.
This is.
But that is supposed to come back.
They want to build.
So if they haven't included this.
So.
And this doesn't give you. All the, no, it doesn't give you much of anything. It's just, it's really, really, yeah. So this is showing that parcel one is sixteen oh eight. But it doesn't never shows. The rest of seven on this, because it didn't modify those, it changed.
It says ten, ten, so it should be another.
Yeah, it doesn't. Well, it only actually says, these are the the ones that were changed, I think, from the original plan. Trying to grab the things that were. I grabbed everything, because I thought.
You're saying that the deed transferred back to Stonegate.
The original.
Does it include all those breakout lots?
Not the acreage.
Yeah, not the acreage.
Not the acreage on that.
Twelve, sixteen. One point nine five and two oh one.
Yeah.
This is what it's supposed to sell back.
They're selling back before everything that that they've been doing. It's just the deed is not referencing, is only referencing the remaining.
They're gonna correct the deed.
Yeah.
To begin with, so so.
So deed drawn, they gotta correct the deed.
So does it include these lots or not? Because it says.
It says in there, but the acreage. Exactly.
So.
They gotta correct the deed.
Or do they go from there?
They gotta correct the deed. They have to correct the deed. If they, if they did transfer all the same property back, then they have to correct the deed.
They have.
Not to record it correctly, they gotta correct the deed.
They have to get sold back, or whatever you wanna call it.
Everything that Abel bought.
They were not legally allowed to buy anything.
Right, so if it, so if the deed is incorrect, I've seen incorrect deeds before, they gotta correct the deed. That's why, if all the acreage actually did transfer back, they gotta correct the deed.
Right, so originally the first deed in.
Yeah, we want, we want the deed to be accurate, so they're gonna, they're gonna record the deed correctly.
Correct. When they first did it, it said the same thing. It's always said the same acreage.
Right, so tell the correct.
To believe, if I, I agree, the deed needs to be correct.
Right.
I'm more inclined to believe if I were to look at this deed and I was to look at the the map.
Yeah.
I would say seven. Okay, I'd say the the acreage is wrong.
Right.
That's because it's specifically says lot, this, 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 all those lots are clearly included.
Right.
So where does that leave us with the the tax front?
So we need to notify.
You ready? Yeah, I'm sorry.
We need to notify the attorney who represents somebody. Um. And and Federoff, who is Stonegate.
Right.
That based on the research that's been done in the Board of Assessors office, the deed is incorrect.
The way we read it.
Unless they can show us a a plan we don't have.
And my guess is, the attorney we're dealing with, who has all the snappy answers, is the one who wrote that deed. And I don't know what she was looking at, but she is the one that keeps saying the map's wrong, the map's wrong. Well, if you take the total amount, the whole chunk. That shouldn't have been sold, it's gotta come back.
So you know what I'll, I I'm gonna guess what probably happened, is she probably used this.
She could, yeah, she could.
Which, like I said, it claims this lot is ten acres.
So probably, yeah, it's probably just an error, in the way she looked at that.
She probably used this as a basis.
So it's probably not intentional or misleading, it was just incorrect, that's all. So just explain what we think happened, and just have the the wording corrected on the deed.
Um, but it still comes down to. There lots are broken out, that's how they sold.
Okay, but the first thing we gotta get straightened out, I hope you draft the letter. If you give me the stats, we'll figure this out. What we need to say to to her, them, whatever, with a copy to Federoff. The total amount. Property that was available, if it could have been sold, is X acres, okay? You. The plan breaks out these lots. Those lots represent this number of acres. That means in what's left of seven and eight is the rest that makes the total. The deed should have reflected all of that acreage. Now, we believe you have to get a, correct the deed. Now, once you do that. You bring the deed back to the town. We will now match it with our records, and once we do that. We can answer the question about, is there still tax money owed? Deed is correct, nobody's got anything they can base anything on.
That's.
Cause everything's gotta be based on the deed.
Right, yeah. Keep it simple, right, yeah.
So, um, does that work for you?
Still have the same situation, that I do think these lots are included.
Yep.
And I'm not sure what our policies in general, whether they're included or not, these lots all have taxes.
Yeah.
Right.
And that needs to be resolved.
And those taxes are higher than whatever's left, seven and eight.
But the point is, is that we've been given, you know, small amounts, we haven't been given the bulk of like.
Right, cause I think it's seven and eight, but if you go from two thousand a year. And then suddenly it's. Two hundred and fifty, two hundred, two, two fifty for the year, you know that things have been reduced, and they should see that. Wow, wow, why did this go down so much? Was my acreage changed? Was there something, you know?
Yeah.
Cause it's a broken house.
But but I'd like to reiterate, and that. We can do what we can to be nice, to correct things, and do do what's right. But we cannot go back in time.
Right.
They owe these bills, period.
Yeah, correct.
So.
Once they, once they divided those offices into house lots.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is that they have never filed for an abatement request, they were issued the bills, they were mailed to them, they need to pay them.
Right.
That's right. So the basis for everything is.
It is that simple, that's the point of me, it's that we mailed you the bill.
Let's.
If you disputed the bill, you needed to dispute it when we mailed it.
Right.
To you. You know, you have a several month window.
Right.
To which dispute, we can't say, you can't go back and say, oh, five years ago, you you did this wrong.
Right, correct.
You should have complained about it five years.
And this is, and this is taking up a lot of your time, and the office's time, and our time here in discussion. It's pretty simple, Bill, like you said.
That's what I keep saying, it's simple. Pay the bills, and then.
Explain that to them, let's move on.
Well, not only, not only that, because they didn't, uh, somebody, whoever owned it at the time, did not. Question the bills. And did not pay the bills. He can't go to the appellate tax board.
Ignore it.
So they don't even have that option.
Correct. You can't just ignore it and say, we'll fix it later.
Okay, so.
So what I'm getting at is, I I want us to be friendly, and I want us to.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I get the feeling that that these people are kinda, hey, you have to fix.
No, you're right.
Back off. We need to, first of all, fix the deed.
And we've done plenty of due diligence on this.
We have, paid the taxes.
Yep, that's right.
And then you go to the zoning board of fields, whatever you need to do to do your development, but um. I get the feeling that they're trying to develop this property without paying the forty three thousand, all forty thousand.
Whatever it is, so.
And that's not gonna happen.
Right.
All right, um, I'm gonna make a motion. That we uh prepare a letter to Attorney Rossi, uh with a copy to Mr. Federoff. Uh, explaining what we have found relative to. The land in question. At Stonegate. All right, I'm gonna make it that short, and then I'll explain. Yeah, exactly. Um. All right, so that's my motion right now, then I'll, I'll give you a little bit more.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, so when we draft this letter. Stephanie will email it to you guys, just to see if you have any thoughts, or say, clarify this, whatever. Stephanie, when you get back to the office, uh let Paul know and Becky know. Don't do anything else on these taxes. Just set it aside. Because we've determined from our records and from everything we can find, the deed is wrong. So the assessors will contact uh the Rossi and Federoff. And tell them. What we found, the deed is wrong, they need to correct the deed. Once they correct the deed, it'll come back to the Board of Assessors. And then that should resolve, so this is why you owe all this money. Now, um, the other thing we'll do is, when the time comes, because I'm sure we're gonna get pushed back, when the time comes. Uh. Z B A is not meeting in August, so by the September Z B A meeting. We will have the town side of this thing down and say to them, so we did, the rest of the research was done, and we found out the deed was incorrect. They still owe this money on these lots. Z B A handles it from there, we're out of it. All right, so I I think with the letter.
Okay, we'll throw them.
Okay.
All right. Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So. I'd like to also point out, you know, they're welcome to see this video.
Sure.
We are launching, yeah, for details.
Mm hmm.
Um. You've actually been on the phone with these people, correct? With the, with the lawyer?
No, it's all email.
Yeah, tracked it.
Hey, a phone call, mate. You very helpful, and just clarify this thing, because I really think it's these little lots seem to be the.
Okay, except that.
Oh. To clarify, we're we're like.
No, no.
You gotta, you gotta be careful about.
No, no.
I I would agree, it's better if they.
Past history tells me, we put everything in writing, and we invite them to a future meeting if they wanna come in and talk about it. But I'm not gonna do it on the phone, it's uh, it's a he should.
Cause there's been too much confusion.
Not only that, it's he said, she said, or she and she said, and.
I'm not, I'm not talking about making any promises, or making any deals, or anything like that, just clarifying communication. It seems like, when I've read the emails going back, it's like. One's talking about those, and the other's talking about oranges.
Right. As a rule of thumb, that's a good idea, get on the phone and just say, hey, listen, here's where we're coming from. Just historically, in this issue, it could very easily turn into, well, Nancy told me this on that day, and this is what I heard, and there's nobody there for you or me to have overheard it and corroborate that and say, no, no, no. This is what Nancy actually said or meant intended.
Yeah, so I think we're gonna write the letter, it should be clear enough. And if they have questions. You can come to the meeting, you can send us something in writing, but uh simply because we are dealing with uh an attorney. Um, we gotta protect the town, and therefore, as far as I'm concerned, um. We should do it in writing. We do have the emails, so those, that's in writing, we know what took place, so.
If nothing else, could you please put in the letter, you know, that they are on our uh agenda for every meeting.
Yeah, for every meeting.
So please come to one of our meetings, and let's get this straightened out.
Correct.
Yeah.
Everybody in one more.
Sign.
Thank you for all your work.
Yeah. I go, I'm not looking at this again today. So, um. The next one is. The lien for um Racine, so. The solar acres were incorrect on the last thing that week. Yeah, it's supposed to be.
We sign.
I am. So these are my words. Um, so it's supposed to be six point five is what. The solar has, so whatever we recorded last time. Is off. So that is, so the solar company called to say. I think this needs to be checked out. So it's a release.
Okay, so for starters, I'll make a motion to open this up, uh, a move that we uh consider and sign possibly sign. Uh. Rec, raids, recreational land taxing for Joanne Racine.
Second, well, she made it second, any discussion?
Yes.
No, just.
Uh, so we've got.
Right, so, so the total acres are here and here.
Thirty seven.
So the fifty eight point eight five is what she has between the two pieces. So we're taking.
You should say six point five?
It's not.
Solar farm is six point five?
Yes.
So was there a, I guess for a map?
Say, we never. Okay, the map that the Forrester sent was for Cabral, not Racine.
Oh, okay.
All right, so if it's fifty eight point eight five acres was the total, and we are now uh doing the lien for six point five. Fifty two point thirty five acres remains in chapter sixty one A.
Right, so five point five comes from one of them.
Good.
Cause that's a point one, not a one point.
I'm just saying, total acres thirty seven, total acres twenty one, that's twenty eight acres. No, no, it's fifty eight, okay, no, you're, it's fifty eight acres.
Okay, but then it's, but this to this is a point one, not a one, right?
You gave me fifty eight point eight five, minus six point five. So what is, is the total fifty eight point eight five, or is it fifty eight?
It's fifty eight point eight five.
All right. Minus.
Needs to be. My mind.
Fifty two thirty five remains in chapter one A, one A.
Four.
Where?
That's six point five.
That's, that's right.
So there's only point one of this.
Yes.
But there's uh six point four in this.
Because of the.
That's why I really like the map, visualize this, um, so it looks like you're just taking a little tiny piece.
Yeah, that's come off of.
Up there, and. See, this is what I'm, and maybe you guys could clarify it for me, if I'm putting, if I've got my house. And I'm putting a chunk of it into chapter. Shouldn't there be a drawing, I mean, just like a D?
I was just gonna say.
What?
Check with.
I could argue, oh, it was the, no, it was there.
Touch with the building department, asked Jemagia what they submitted when they applied for a building permit, because it should show the layout, all right? Um. Like when plans come in, you know, developers. How many sets of plans do you want? And it's like, no, I don't need one. Give one to Todd, he'll hold it for the stormwater committee. So there had to have been a plan done, so uh.
But that's for building, that's for construction, I'm talking about putting things into chapter.
Yeah, but it should show the original, it should show the whole thing. The whole layout.
Mm hmm.
And then it should show how much it's gonna be solar, so once you see the whole layout, you know what.
Where, I think that's what you're talking about.
Yes.
Where, not, not just how much, like you've got fifty acres.
Yeah.
Turn ten into chapter land, where is that ten on the fifty?
Right.
Right, cause you could say, well, it was up in the upper left corner, and no, it's in the southeast corner, and you know, then you start moving it around. Yeah, so what it kinda, that's what we're asking, like, it would make sense that, it would make sense that if you got fifty, I'm gonna put it in the northwest corner.
Before you say nobody's doing it, check with building, okay? Um, and the other one would be Concom, because when we were out there doing the sidewalk on Cabral and Racine property. Uh. Conservation was there, Building Commissioner was there, um, obviously dual role of stormwater committee, but. Everyone was asking questions that was pertinent to, to, let's say, their department, so.
And that's supposed to be the correction, and. I had you sign some things, so you need to sign the one that the guy actually signed from before from the Forrester. That's, there's no more. It's all the same sheet. Didn't sign, but it didn't help the guys. So. I don't know what you guys wanted to.
So, I'm okay, I guess, with signing this, um, but I would like to see a map.
If one exists, or whatever, yeah, sure.
What what I'm saying is that even in the future, we should, if we're putting stuff in. After, we should have, you know, even some back by napkins.
Right.
Some kind of drawing.
I agree, it just gives us an idea of what you thought of.
Right, and we put it in our records, and that way, when, you know.
If there's any question. They can say, yeah, that's where it was supposed to be. Yeah, that makes sense, that's fine.
We'll see what type of. Procedure, or if there's something in place to get that type of.
Um, if, I would be surprised if building doesn't have it, but also ask Todd, because this whole thing came before the stormwater committee. I mean, you know, those big plan things.
Yeah, well, definitely that, that's this one, but Bill's asking, like, if someone wants to put.
Well.
Five of their twenty acres into chapter.
They have to submit a plan. Somebody in this town has a plan.
All right, hang on.
Definitely.
She made it second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Do that before you sign, Bill. Make sure it's okay.
I already decided I was gonna sign.
Right, all right, good.
All right, so the next thing, the rollback tax, solar farm, Clearway, that's a Rouge, right? Nancy?
It's Clearway Solar on a Rouge property, yes.
Yes.
Um. So to give you an update on that one. Um. I did deliver the the two sheets you gave me showing what the taxes are. Um. I spoke with Carrie. Yesterday. And she was looking into what she might have had on it.
So this is the um. First right of refusal, the Board of Assessors saying no to the two pieces, and planning saying no to the two.
To the town acquiring them.
Yeah, and the selectmen saying.
We don't wanna buy it.
Right, and the deed that I found associated with it. So I only made two copies, so I don't know if, if you look at that one, and you guys are just gonna pick out also. That would say no. But, um. And then.
They said no to the town purchasing it.[1698.57]
Right.
People have to understand, we know what we're talking about, but it means the town did not act on its first right of refusal. That's what the no was meaning, it could now be released from sixty one A.
So in their files, I found the rollback tax that they would have paid for the five years. But I don't know if it ever went on to the board signing it, and it going to the Rouge's, I don't, but they're still in chapter. They're not. They're not taken out of chapter, so I I don't really know what, and they're not responding to emails, and Nancy has gone all.
Okay, and I did talk to the building commissioner about this yesterday, and I told him I would get back to him. Um, when I delivered the two papers, neither of the owners were present, and the person who took it, their daughter, is not involved with these at all, and all I said was, please give these to your parents. These are rollback taxes that should be paid. And whoever the attorney was who was handling the paperwork should have advised them of this, but in any case, you have a chance to check into it, get back to the assessor's office, so we have, that's where we are right now. But I did speak to Mr. Agia about this yesterday, and, um, so that's when I went to Carrie and talked to her also. Um, so, we know, what you've got right there is the latest we know. So we've got to pursue getting the rollback taxes paid.
Right.
So forgive me, I'm still a little confused on what exactly the issue is here. So somebody took a plan out of chapter with a rollback taxes, assigned to them, and they didn't pay them, is that a problem?
I don't know if it asked, went to them, I know they were created, I just don't know if, because I think there was some issues.
Do we have a deed?
Yeah, it's connected, it's the end of that.
Well, the, the project came in, from what, from what Carrie said, I believe the project was presented in two thousand seventeen, and that's when things started, you know, the sixty one A and all that stuff was supposed to happen.
Yeah, so I think everything started around seventeen, but then kept going in and finally nineteen.
And then a revised plan came in, and I think that was dated nineteen, because this, this deed is dated two thousand nineteen.
Um, it's different, Carol went through it, and it's different acreage next to, you know, different portions.
Yeah, there's bits and pieces, I can see, looking at this, so, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep this here, because I'm gonna, I probably need that for what I took to Mr. Agia. But anyhow, uh, yeah, we're pursuing it from two different directions. But after I get to talk to him, uh, and if Carrie doesn't have anything else, um, and you've done everything you can, I think we need to send a letter from the board advising them that these taxes are due, overdue, and payable, and that give them thirty days, we need to have this money paid in thirty days, all right? There are other things the town can do, and I hope we don't have to get into that, but, um, by the same token, the project is under construction. So, uh, there is leverage here on our part, as far as, uh, everything continuing and moving ahead. So I'm gonna make a motion that the board of assessors send a letter to the, uh, property owners for the solar farm.
Can, can I interrupt you there, because I'm still not fully understanding before I agreed on sending a letter? So I'm fully understanding what the situation is, so it took it out of chapter, there was a bill that may or may not have been mailed. They, did, did property change ownership after?
No, no, the deed, the deed's attached to this package.
And so, yeah, but.
It's about solar.
Okay, but who, who is, who is the seller and purchaser?
No, there's no.
It's a leasing of the solar.
It's a lease agreement.
Lease agreement, so. The original.
Property ownership didn't change.
Property ownership.
No, there are two, we consider this we, but for all intent and purpose, town considers this two solar farms, it's one big area, but the reason it's two solar farms, and there are two permits and two of everything going forward, is there are two different property owners, one piece of property is owned by a husband and wife, the other piece of property is in a trust, okay? So, that's why you see this here, so the question is, the deed is here for the property we're talking about.
Yeah, but, so my question was, I just want to make sure there was no complications there with, oh, he owes it, oh, he owes it, or something like that. So we know who the person is responsible. There was, there is a bill, so it just needs to be sent.
We know who the people are, because there were two invoices, because what I delivered was two sheets, one for the trust and one for the other one. So what I'm proposing is that we send a letter reiterating what the situation is, give them thirty days to pay the taxes, and if that doesn't happen, there's other action.
Right, okay.
Um, well, it was fifteen thousand on one and twenty six on the other. I don't know if everything's coming out.
Oh, oh, you're saying fifteen thousand?
In back tax, in, in.
Rollback.
Rollback, rollback tax.
Um, this one has eighty two acres, and this one has twenty three. So I'm not sure what the, what's going back in, because I have someone that constantly is asking, are you releasing or releasing it? I said, we haven't heard what is going back in yet, so it might not be this, I don't know if all of it's coming out. That's, but no one's getting back to me, tell me, because I don't know if, maybe they're only using ten out of here.
Right, we, we need clarification on exactly what they're gonna use, so we know what to tax them on, which would be accomplished by?
The letter, the letter will indicate what it is we're looking at, and ask them, number one, this is what we determine the taxes are on this parcel and this parcel, and if, uh, pay them in thirty days, and the other thing is, if you have information to further clarify this, come to our next meeting.
Right, so go ahead and make your motion.
Okay, so I make a, excuse me, I make a motion that, a letter to the property owners for fourteen twenty William Street and fifteen twenty two William Street, advising them that rollback taxes and the amount of X and X are due and payable within thirty days. You know, if this is under, if this is, information is in dispute, please come to the next meeting, which will be, we'll fill in the blank. But obviously, if they have documentation, excuse me, that we don't have. So.
Second, for the letter, second, all right, motion made in second, any, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, so the next one is changing use, ten fifty William Street, that's Reed.
Yep.
Yeah, so the problem continues on this one, because there is, there are rollback taxes due on, uh, the small amount of acreage that was sold to a builder, which is kind of on corner of Audrey Lane and William Street. How much money is that? It's not a lot.
Maybe it's like seven.
Seven hundred and something, all right. So there's that issue, but that issue, because there are unpaid taxes due to the town, that is going to prevent anything happening over at the, I'll call it the farm stand, where, uh, somebody wants to lease or rent what is, I call the packing shed, the building out behind the stand, because they haven't gone to planning yet, but they've, they've actually got a cut part of that building out of sixty one A, because that whole property is sixty one A, okay? Um.
Sorry, guys. Are we talking about the, used to be?
Reed's farm, Reed's farm, and then under the sun.
Under the sun.
Yes, the farm stand up front, and then they had the storage out back, right, so they got the bigger part.
It was all.
Uh, uh, the question, I think that we honed in on was, can they do that if there is outstanding taxes on a different property? So, my question to some people around town was, that has not historically been what Dyton has done, that if they owed, let's say it's a thousand dollars, seven hundred dollars on another piece of land, but they're doing something with this piece of land, that unless there's something owed on that particular piece of land, we don't hold that up.
No, that's not true, since I've been on two thousand seven, I was made aware of this practice then, you owe the town money, and you need anything like a building permit or something, you're gonna be told, pay those taxes.
Okay, that's not what I heard.
But it, and Carrie gave me the citation, I know it's chapter forty, it's the section that's not ringing a bell, but she did give me the citation, because she mentioned that at the ZBA meeting when we were talking about Stonegate, that until the taxes are paid, and even the ZBA says, as long as you owe taxes, you, you know, we'll continue this.
So what you're saying, right, I just want to make sure I'm clear, right, so I'm not questioning that, I'm just saying, you owe AP, you know, you have AP and C, and you owe on A, but you want to do something on C, you owe for A, you still gotta clear it up before you do anything on C.
Because it's all in the name of the same owner.
Right.
If the land that was taken out of chapter.
I, I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess we're straying beyond our box here. Uh, what I'm saying is that particular property.
Yeah.
Um, where there's a discussion or some problem with them using it as a farm stand, uh, because it's historically always been a farm.
Yeah, no, no, they're just, they want to use, not the front, the retail part where you would walk in as a consumer, right, where the farm stand actually was. They want to use, if I understood correctly, the
Packing.
Which used to be packed, and they could pack, and they used to bring all their product in back there, it's all the big doors, right? I think that's the section that they want to change for a gym or something, right, an exercise.
Okay, so now they're, they're changing its use.
They change, they have to pull it out of sixty one A, and then they're gonna have to pay a rollback on that particular section, because they're changing use, and it doesn't qualify.
That makes sense to me.
So really, the thing is, what they want to do is the fact that can they do it when they owe?
And they owe seven hundred dollars, and we know that.
Seven hundred dollars on.
As long as they, we know exactly what that figure is, and that that's gonna hold them up, I think the question was, does Dyton normally do that? Do we hold up development of property, see if they owe on property?
Is that something that we as a board decide, I think, with that CBA, right? We just report to them.
It's state law, and as, as a matter of fact, um, the town, it was, it was, um, a state law you have to accept, it was voted at town meeting, because that was told to me too. I'm trying to think who gave that to me, it probably was through the town clerk's office. The town of Dyton voted to accept this section of chapter forty. The minute you accept it, you enforce it, okay? So that's why I said, it seems, it got accepted before I came on the board in oh seven, um, but I was made aware of it in oh seven for some reason.
I just want to make sure that we historically have done that, because if we do that, and then the Reed family comes and says, hey, listen, I know three people that you didn't do that on, because they have a lot of A and O taxes, but then they built on C, then.
Whoever the board that did it at that time, in effect, if they granted that, they chose to waive it, I mean, you don't, if a town.
I just want to make sure it's consistent with what the town has actually done, that's all.
And, and the town accepted the section of the law, is what I'm saying.
Right.
If whoever granted something or other didn't either know it or didn't enforce it, this board is not responsible for that.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm trying to say, this board isn't responsible for any of this, and our, our job is to determine whether it's chapter or not, and what's the amount, oh.
What's taxable, and what's, whatever, and what class?
Decide whether they're gonna build or do a job.
We don't decide any of that.
That's got nothing to do with.
Yeah, we can't prove any of that.
All we, so what, what's the?
But when you think about the fact that we know that this is owed, because they came out of our offices back tax on something else, and we know that they want to do something, we should be bringing it to someone's attention.
Well, there is that form that has to be filled out, like, for example, if I'm gonna build something on a piece of land, um,
Tax collector.
I have to get a statement, a signed statement that says lot number, yada yada, taxes owed, it better be zero, because that is what I put with my package that goes to the building commissioner.
Right.
There has to be that sign off.
Right.
I think, I think one of the things we need to look at tightening up is that tax form gets filled out at the collector's office, it needs to be signed up in the assessor's office, in other words, so that you can look to make sure that there's nothing in the assessor's office that says anything different, okay? Because there's another, if you will, safeguard, and and all it is is a matter of, do they owe taxes? And it says no, you look at it, you check your records, it's no, initially it goes to, well, it goes with the package and goes to the building commissioner.
So we'll have to make sure that what's owed on that rollback one piece of land that was pulled out to sell is accurate, so that if we have to submit them a bill, that it's right.
Has it been billed, because initially the amount was.
Like seven hundred bucks or something.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's still like.
Initially, there was an error made, and a whole bunch of land came out.
And then we corrected it, right, this goes back last year, right, so then we corrected it, we decided what to do with it.
Yeah.
That it wasn't the big amount, we said, no, that's not correct, so we corrected it to the smaller amount.
Yes.
Which makes sense, because the intent was to roll it back in, and we discussed all that, right, okay? All right, so.
So, uh, I guess.
No motion here, though, I don't think.
No, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Right, okay.
With a progress report.
Right, okay. That's fair.
Let's say status report, I don't know if we're gonna make progress. Yeah.
Okay, so, um, next is payroll, two guys.
Move, we sign payroll?
Second.
Motion made in second, ends discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Nancy, do you have your, um?
Yes, I got them with me, I just got my photocopy, yes.
This is the certified mail that was sent out, Nancy has receiveds.
Is it total?
The bills, they were not best. Well, that's what's on her schedule, yeah, that's it.
Now we're on bills?
I just wasn't sure.
I move that we sign bills for total of fifteen dollars and seven.
I'm sorry.
You need to step down a second, because I'm gonna abstain, because I'm the one getting.
Okay, I stepped down as chairman, and second now, motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I, record me as an extension.
Why?
Because it's, or.
It's, I'd be approving my own.
Your expense.
Yeah.
Where everybody's supposed to sign it?
I gotta sign it too, I gotta sign, yeah, yeah.
Where do we sign it?
Just put it someplace on there.
Just put it down.
Bring it down at the bottom.
They should want some sort of dollar amount on that, like, if it's over fifty bucks, you don't have to step down, recuse yourself.
Well, the other thing too is just, just to comment, um, since we are going to, since we I gotta sign it as a person, rest request. Um, next year at budget time, we probably should put a few piddling dollars in these, the fence viewers and whatever budgets, have, create a budget, put some money in it, because if we have other cases where we have to do certified mailings, we'll have that money, uh, and then if we don't spend it, it's a small amount, it goes back to.
And reimburse.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay, so this next thing, it's, um, it's in the abatements, so there was abatements that were, um, taken off as collectibles um, two thousand and six, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, for someone on motor vehicle, a particular person, and they actually went and paid it, so we are reversing the abatements that we did back then.
So we're paying them back.
So the money can go into the account, and we, we talked to the accountant, so this is taking, this is reversing what we did, this is, I don't think there's a grand total, there's different years, so, I don't know if you want to rattle off.
We hear four on your list.
There, these two are probably out, tell it together. Eighty five, seventy five.
Okay. So I move that we sign the rescinding of abatements.
Second.
Uh, who's this person?
Um, Ryan Reynolds.
Ryan Reynolds. Anything? For, uh, bills of, let's see, ten dollars and thirty one cents, uh, eighty five dollars and ninety four cents, one hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy five cents.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion?
Is that for all, all that money is one person?
Yes.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
When that's canceled, sold, transferred, all that.
Move that we sign the, uh, abatements for, uh, for this list on August one third, two, two thousand five hundred and forty one dollars, forty six.
Second.
Motion made, and second, and any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Stephanie, did the green cards come back to you?
One.
Okay.
One, bills so far.
Okay.
Maybe that's why that white cried, talked about maybe they didn't put theirs, or they didn't pick it up or something, right? Because everything was in the packet, or was it just a letter?
No, there was just a letter, but what happened was, the agenda was supposed to go with the letter, but I was in this building with the certified letters, and I had to get to the post office before they closed. The agendas were at home, I was gonna put this whole thing together and go there, but because I got tied up in this building, I said, I gotta get these letters, because you have to give them so many days. So then I got the agendas, and they were mailed separately in a regular assessor's stamp, because Val did the envelopes for me, so that's what happened. But this notification, yeah, it's. So that's what happened, but this notification, yeah, it's, they went out.
Right, so I'm, I'm gonna attach that to the bill, right?
Yep. Uh, all the public, so I, I just, I just mentioned, uh, the, our next meeting is September the seventh, so that's the date we'll use in those letters that we have to send. Okay.
How many correspondence?
No. Minutes?
Move that we approve the minutes as shown for eight, three, twenty-two.
Eight, three.
That's what I said.
Eight, three, twenty-two, yeah.
Um, you said eight, twenty, twenty, twenty-two. Um, second.
Motion made in second, and any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
You have to sign it, right?
Wait a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, well, unanticipated, um. I have a motor vehicle commitment, I didn't know if they were gonna get it to me in time, so can that come underneath that? It just has to be signed for the next, um. Instead of putting a hole, this is, um, for ninety thousand dollars, billing to people with. So, is that okay for unexpected?
Just pass it over, I just had to sign.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's, it, what's it for?
Warrant commitment for, um, commitment for.
Taxes.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
I move that we sign the motor vehicle, motor vehicle commitment for ninety thousand, sixteen dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
Motion made, and second, and any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The, um, clerk's meeting in Westport at White's, um, on Wednesday's, you know, fourteenth. Just going over, you know, exemptions and different things, I figured I just printed out.
That the one we went to last year?
No, that was Christmas. This one is just.
Just for you.
Um, you, you guys can go if you want.
Sounds thrilling.
Review for personal exemption.
Yeah, it's on the back, it's someone.
So this is just F one.
Yeah, you don't have to go, I just, when there's certain things that come up, I'm going to put the email herself.
Is it the Assessors Association?
Clerk meeting, you know, one.
Oh, but it's not, that's not who sponsored the fall meeting we went to, that was Bristol County, wasn't it? That's a different group.
They have a, kind of one the same day, I guess. And there is something coming up at Lombardo, I think. I'll let you guys know that.
Yes, I sent, I thought I followed it in an email, was that the one? The D O R is.
Yeah, I might go to that one, I might let the girls go to this one.
Um.
We usually go, it used to be at Venus, it was nice, and it was forty bucks, forty-five dollars, gonna go right through that, by the.
The one that, the. I, you didn't see that, maybe, did I just send it to you? Uh, if you, what I would just say for informational purposes, send it to Bill and Eric, because when I looked at it. Uh, it was D O R, and all I could think of, this, this sounds like a training update thing. Um, I don't think there's a cost affiliated with that one.
Usually there is, so I.
If it is, it will be small. Isn't it almost an all-day thing, or all morning?
No, it's Catherine Collier.
It stretches out, I know that, like I say, I looked at it, um.
Usually it ends like after, I don't know.
I think now that, well, I probably shouldn't say it, because it'll come back and haunt us. That the, the pandemic is still here, but it's safe to get together. Uh, some of the, uh, state agencies are doing the live meetings, um. They're having the live meetings. You know, I was thinking about, they have, you have Zoom meetings, when they do slide presentations, you might as well sit in the other room, because you can't read them. Because on a, unless you got a screen as big as that TV, and not only that, there are things that are put up there at a town meeting, meetings in this building. And if, depending where you're sitting in this room, you can't possibly read what it says, so you're hoping you gotta pay my handout. Uh, so, that kind of training live, my opinion, is better than trying to do this sitting at home or wherever. Um.
I'll look it over, I'll see when it is not forwarded to you guys, just, you know, when things come up, I know, people are interested in different.
I get a lot of emails, I know I sent one, well, I sent one to Paul, because there's one coming up for treasurer collective. Uh, and I sent that one to him, and says, you might wanna look into this.
I think that one has an assessor section, a treasurer section, and accounting section, you have to pick. I said, oh, we can't do all three, so I don't, I think that was that Lombardo's.
Yeah, there's, and then there's another one that's coming up, and I'm thinking, might be the same place. There were two, there's one at the log cabin in western part of the state, I'm thinking Springfield. Somewhere out, holy, somewhere out there, the other one is what's new in municipal law? And that one, I believe, is going to be at Lombardo's also, on the east, you know, they split them up, um. They haven't done that for a few years, and for newly elected people, those, uh, what's new in municipal law is a good, uh, is a good work, Charlie. So, uh, I'm not driving you out of the office, but you might wanna take a look at it, you know, you know, um, it's a good refresher.
Alright, I make a motion to adjourn.
I had, uh, one question that I wanted to ask, um, were we talking about these, the solar farm things? Now, when somebody takes a, a property, and they wanna, it's in chapter land, and they want to make it into a solar farm. I know you have spearheaded the pilot agreements.
Mm-hmm.
Is that directly coming from the Board of Assessors, or?
It's a town thing.
Yeah, so you.
Um, no, um. When we ran into the problems with the first three that were presented, and two of them. Um, three got signed by the Board of Selectmen, only one passed at town meeting. Because I found out, and they were four dollars, I, I asked the people to table them.
Yeah.
Um, those first three pilot agreements had no involvement on the part of the Board of Assessors. I was on the FinCom at the time, and I said, wait a minute, how come there's nothing from the assessors? Carol was at the meeting. And she said, because they never asked us, I says, how do you do a tax agreement without assessors? And then my other part was, well, I'm on the finance committee. This is taxes, shouldn't we have some idea about what it is given away?
Certainly shouldn't be coming out of this.
So. After those episodes, when the next one came along, um. I had, I, I was on the Board of Selectmen again, uh, so it was at two fif, two thousand fifteen or later, whenever it was. Um, I said to the board, we need a standard pilot agreement. That is across the board, this is what the town of Dayton has for a solar pilot agreement. With blanks, so that each one is, that comes in, you're told ahead of time, you want a pilot agreement? Here's the boilerplate, the only thing you're gonna have to provide us with is the, fill them in the blanks. The appendix that lists the payment schedule, Board of Assessors will look at that, Board of Assessors will be in touch with you. We'll reach an agreement, you and they wheel the town, they reach an agreement, total taxes, the payment schedule, boom, ba, boom, ba, boom. That's how that all came about, so.
Okay, but you, you're going down a road, that's, wasn't where my question was.
Okay.
My question was, so you're gonna negotiate a pilot agreement, and they've taken the land out of chapter land. Now they, this, there is this bill of, of the rollback taxes.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I would imagine, you know, we were talking about, you know, do you get a building permit, or whatever? I certainly don't think we should ever give a pilot agreement to somebody until all of those rollback taxes and everything. Because doesn't the pilot agreement supersede, like, oh, I don't have to pay those rollback taxes because I've got this pilot?
No, I think the pilot agreement shows them what's expected on that property.
It has a beginning date and an ending date, and what has happened is. The property at Tremont and Middle Street, they do have a pilot agreement, because when they came in, everything was in place. Then we found out in one particular case, the land never came out of chapter. Again, who's the lawyer representing you? Whoa, wait a minute. So the pilot agreement is here, the pilot agreement is here, however, it's subject to amendment. Dates can be amended, okay? So we've already given them a date extension once, because the ending date. In other words, it also states you will have this done by a date, just say, September thirtieth. And you're the developer, and you say to the town, we're not gonna be ready by September thirtieth, so. Depending upon what the overall date is, the Board of Selectmen has set. If that new extension date is October thirtieth, okay, and the selectmen date is December thirty-first, the same year. Then. An extension P can be granted by a vote, okay, we can, we can amend it, we'll extend it, so forth and so on. However, we had one that went beyond the date. And asked for an extension, and what happened was, it had to go back to the Board of Selectmen, and I explained to them what had happened. And they did vote to extend it. And unfortunately, that amendment has to be recorded, and I told the developer at the time. Don't make a habit of asking for extensions, you make sure what you have asked us for, ask the town, us. It's going to be within this, because we have to record these things, and we don't wanna keep doing that, so.
So, so I understand that all agreements are.
But these are limited amendments.
About these interactions between the pilot agreement and the rollback. This, this is specifically what I'm thinking of, and, uh, first of all, you know. Wanna make sure the pilot isn't used as some kind of tool, so, like, for example, you said, it didn't come out of chapter, right? So let's say, you know, uh. Agreement goes, and the pilot agreement starts January first, on February first, oops, we didn't take it out of chapter land. We take it out of chapter land, now there's a rollback, it's five thousand dollars, bill goes to the person. I don't have to pay that, I have a pilot agreement that says, I'm only paying this in taxes.
The pilot agreement is for personal property only.
Personal property only.
The person who owns the real estate owes the rollback tax.
Does, it doesn't negate the fact that they're gonna owe some rollback.
Okay, no, no, that.
Yeah, it doesn't supersede, yeah, yeah, that doesn't supersede saying, oh, well, I've got a pilot agreement, so I don't have to pay the rollbacks, yeah.
I did not realize, so pilot agreements do not cover.
Real estate.
So, so if somebody's looking at. A piece of land for a solar agreement, can they request a pilot agreement to say, do I wanna be in Dayton, or do I wanna be in Somerset? Can they say that? Can I give you a pilot agreement, give me a boilerplate, so I could determine if I even wanna be in this town with my solar? Because maybe there's another town that has a better agreement, and I don't like it, so you could get agreement and not even.
You, you'll get a. With nothing filled in.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
And say, and what we say is.
They wanna, they, they know if they wanna come to that. So we can, yeah.
And what we, and what we say is, this is it, when we say we're gonna negotiate a pilot agreement. The only thing we're gonna talk about is the, are the blanks, and of course, the total taxes and the payment schedule. We're not changing all of that other stuff that requires you to pay this, or to do that, or whatever. That's not part of it, so you need to know upfront. Uh, as a matter of fact, the, uh, company that wants to put solar on two buildings at the Aggie School. Early on last year, um. The, the, one of the representatives said to me, do you sign into pilot agreements? I said, yes, we do. He says, uh, like, what kind of terms? I said, I'll send you a boilerplate, you can look at it, understand one thing. Other than the blanks and negotiating the taxes on that personal property. Everything in there is cast in stone, that's been approved by town council. If we change any of that language, we gotta go back to town council, we're not spending money on that. Everyone, the understanding is, everyone that wants a pilot agreement with this town. Gets the same deal. Uh, if it's a fifteen-year thing, we'll talk about that, you want twenty years, we'll talk about that, we don't usually go beyond twenty years. However, if you say, I don't like this clause here, we had somebody object to. Um, there's a clause in there that says, upon execution of the pilot agreement. The, um, developer will pay to the town of Dayton, five thousand dollars. Period, to cover the costs incurred by the town of Dayton to put that whole thing together. And, for example, if it has to be amended, that money's there, that money is non-refundable. It is paid right, the town goes into estimated receipts. On a particular solar farm, where you get two pieces of property sitting side by side, two different owners. So the solar company said, um, we're gonna pay ten thousand, yes, you do. Well, we figured, we, they're right together, we'll pay five, we said, two solar agreements, two property owners, five thousand, five thousand. I said, besides that, you're a billion-dollar company, we're, we're talking about five thousand dollars twice, okay? No, no, we don't do that, this is it. If it was only one owner, it would be five thousand, the reason it is held this way is because there were two owners. If owner A doesn't pay their taxes, we can't go after B, because it's all together, no, no, separate, distinct. Okay?
That, that.
Alright, fair enough.
The, the basic answer to my question is that, that we must say it is not.
Have you, did I give you a pilot, a blank pilot?
No, I, no.
I'll, I'll email one to you, yes, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion cap, all of the favors. Yeah, I'm sorry, ten, 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 I got.
Do you want a boilerplate?
Sure, no, I'd like to see one, yeah, that'd be good.